And go ahead if you want to open, okay? We will open the Wednesday, May 12th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Danny Hunn. Commissioner William Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Dave Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Arlington Lamica.
Present.
Commissioner Keith Dodson.
Present.
Vice Chair Michael Spalata. And Chair John Owens.
Present. I talked to Mike earlier and he said he would be joining us.
Wonderful, thank you.
This may be out of order, but just welcome back, Keith.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
It's good to see you guys.
We gave him all that last time, but kudos to you for giving him some more.
I must have, I must have missed that, that or something, or, or maybe that was when I didn't say.
That's right, you were on the road.
Okay.
Okay, review of agenda. If there's any items that have rose up to the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. A two to three majority vote is required. Anything, Dominique?
There are no items have been brought up for, to staff's attention to be added to the agenda.
Very good. Public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda, may do so during the public comment period for up to two minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. Do we have anybody wanting to speak in public comment?
Members of the public, if you wish to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling in from the phone. Chair, we do have one member of the public who wishes to make public comment.
Okay, before we do that, let's just, let me just say that I see Mike is now with us. So if you can make sure he's on the attendance.
Thank you. I will note that Commissioner Michael has arrived at the meeting.
Very good. Okay, sir, or ma'am?
Keela Kealan, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hi, my name is Keelia Kealan. I am a CSU MB student and half seaside resident. And I will be making a public comment for a school project I'm doing. So I'm not really sure how relevant it is to today's agenda, but I wanted to bring to your attention how seaside recreational zones and conservation zones should be increased. And I also wanted to make a recommendation of coming up with a plan to plant more trees within these zones as they are being increased with more native trees in these spaces to offset carbon emissions from the city in order to do our part in fighting against climate change. And that is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
For your comments. Any other members of the public wishing to make public comment? Chair, there are no other members of the public that have indicated they wish to make public comment at this time.
Okay, public comment is still open. Public comment is still open, but closing. One more go around, public comment. Public comment is now closed. Approval of minutes, approval of the April 28th, 2021 meeting minutes. Commissioners, everybody read them? If everybody has, do we have an emotion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of April 28th.
Very good. I have a first. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Lamica?
Aye.
Commissioner Dodson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spalata?
Abstain, was in present.
Thank you. And Chair Owens?
Aye.
Your motion passes.
Very good. Business item. Fence exception application number FE-21-01 continuation of application submitted by Caroline Stav-Vimeister. Applicant and property owner requesting a fence exception to allow for the construction of a five-foot-tall fence along the front side of the property lines, one foot above the permitted yard. Staff?
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. So this should look familiar. This is a continuation fence exception, which we heard a few weeks ago, back in April, for 1289 Darwin. Just to remind everyone of the location, it is here on Darwin Street, adjacent to Durant Park. This is a dead-end street here. The house was constructed in 1962 and has been purchased by the current property owner last year. Since then, they have been doing numerous updates to beautify the property and bring it up to code. And one of these proposed updates includes a new fence. So again, as I mentioned, this is a dead-end street. We have a blockade here where Darwin meets Durant Park. So beyond this house, there's only actually two houses that are serviced by this portion of Darwin. So here we have our site plan. The actual placement of the fence hasn't changed. It's simply the design and the height. The original proposed increase was to simply add on to the existing fence and the height increase was asking for five feet, two inches. Since the original submittal, the applicant has revised their plans. They're not going to be adding on to the existing fence. They're going to remove the fence and replace with a new five-foot-tall fence. This is one foot above the permitted height, which is four feet. So when we did present the past project on April 14th, the item was continued. The commission specifically requested a redesign, which was cohesive and in keeping with the newly designed gate that is on the property. And the fence should consider visibility and openness while providing privacy. So I have an example photo on the right of what the commission was looking to avoid. A fence with basically just some trellis tacked on top. And then we have a photo of the existing fence as it exists. And so the applicant has come back with a number of different plans. So Plan A is at the top, and then we have Plan C and Plan B. So what they're proposing is to replace the existing three-foot fence with a new redwood fence. And then inside this five-foot-tall redwood fence, there would be these open panels. I'm gonna pop real quick to show an example. So there would be these open window panels. And then depending on which design the commission goes with, they would be located at different places along the actual fence. And Plan A was the one that was put forth by, by the applicant. After discussions with staff, though, they did provide additional designs like Plan B and Plan C. These are the two, one of the two options that staff does recommend as it does place some windows at the very edges of the property. So this is at the corner where it meets the driveway on one side and the corner at the other. So you have these three-foot sections along each side, the side of the fence and the front portion, which allows for better viewing for those driveways. And so then it's basically just picking which design option the commission likes best. So Plan C and Plan B specifically. I had them mislabeled in the staff reports, so my apologies, but Plan C, which is this top one here, proposes to have four window panels. So two of the window panels would be located at each corner. And then you would have two three-foot by two-foot panels along the front property as well, and then a half split here. And then Plan B would have only three windows. You'd have the main one in the middle and then the two at each corners of the property. So again, here's just showing those enlarged windows. So each window panel section would comprise of two three-foot by two-foot-high sections, which would total six feet. And they would either be placed together side by side or a split along the edge of the property where it goes to the side and along the frontage. And so we do also have the gates. So these, these gates were designed and constructed and built by the applicant and property owner. And so she would be doing the same with the new fence. It would follow this, this design, the one on the right, or my apologies, the one on the left is the existing one, what you saw at the last meeting. Since then, she has installed a new gate as well. This is going to the rear property along the left side of the property. So this is newly installed and would match with the newly proposed fence design. And here we have a photo from inside the yard looking out. So the applicant is proposing to maintain these existing fence posts. These are based down here in concrete. There was some discussion with the commission about requiring possibly stepping back. The applicant would really like to, to keep these existing concrete footings, use this as the base for the new fence. And maintain the, the footprint of the fence along the property edge. So overall, the proposed fence height exception is consistent with other fences found in the neighborhood and would enhance the neighborhood aesthetics. Proposed fence is of a cohesive design and reflects the continued improvements of the property. Based on the analysis, staff recommends approval of the fence exception, either Design Option B or C, subject to the draft resolution conditions of approval, attachment to the site plan, and Attachment 3, the fence designs. And then the applicant is available and on the meeting if you have questions. And I am also available to answer questions that are planning-related.
Thank you, Dana. Commissioners? Commissioners? What is wrong with this?
I can hear you.
Is there anything for staff? Seeing none, we will open it up to the applicant.
Caroline, you now have the floor.
Good evening, Caroline.
There we go. Hopefully that works. Can you hear me?
Yes, much better.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate that you're letting me speak with you again today. I was really not clear on the last application, how much detail you needed to look at and hopefully approve our, our application. I have a lot of building and construction background. I build fences, I build walls, I build houses, I build kitchens and bathrooms. Construction is, is kind of my thing. So whatever I build is always gonna look gorgeous, like you saw with my two gates. I'm really looking forward to putting this in place. We've been sitting out front a lot now, trying to see what it feels like. And I think what we're proposing is really going to increase not only the neighborhood, but also the value of our property, which is, of course, a good idea. So I'm really hoping that you will let me do that, contingent on the fact that I can't get any redwood fencing anywhere at the moment. So it's gonna be a project that's gonna take a while to complete. If you have questions for me in terms of the project, please let me know.
Commissioners, anything for the applicant?
I just have a quick question for Caroline. Caroline, my question would be, what is the, the difficulty of just pushing it up to four feet instead of the five? I, I'm a little concerned that the five foot's gonna look like just a big mass across and detract from just the visual walking up and down that area of the park versus just a four-foot fence.
Sure. Houses on either side of our property are, on the one side, their fence is six-foot-high. And on the other side of our property, the fence is five-foot-high. So in keeping with the neighborhood on our side of the street, we would be following right in line with what's already there.
I guess that doesn't answer my question. I'm asking for, for you, what's the reason to go? Basically, the four-foot would be fine. You don't need an exception, as I understand it. So why go to five, especially since the one, at least one on your left, that's their backyard that that fence is six-foot-high? I don't know about the one on the right, but so really, I'm talking about a personal question for you. What's wrong with four-foot versus five?
Four-foot is still very short. It doesn't give us quite the ability to be creative in terms of these windows that I'm proposing to build, which is an awesome thing to do. I don't think at four feet it would look right. We can certainly go to four feet, but I think aesthetically, I think the five-foot would, would feel better, it would look better.
Can I add a question?
Is Mr. Evans, you done? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Dodson.
Yeah, I, I was wondering, there are photos at the back of the views from various sides and things like that, and how that would appear from the, from the property with the new fence in there. I was wondering, there is a property that wasn't shown, but it's immediately behind their neighbor on Darwin across the street. And that's going up significantly. That was something that was approved by this commission probably five, six months ago. It's going to be a second floor, a second floor deck. And I was wondering if any, I went over there and I couldn't really tell how that might affect their view. And I think that's one of the, the concerns, as I read it, was that you know, there was, were some privacy concerns, and that might come direct, there might be a view directly from there into their, their front yard.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodson. Anything else?
That's all.
Commissioners, anybody else?
I got a quick one.
Yeah, I just, I realized that, that what he's talking about, all I can see is the, the tarps fluttering in the breeze above, above our neighbor's house. So it is definitely there and it will definitely look into our yard. So I hadn't thought of that in terms of a consideration. I'm a bit more concerned about the traffic that walks on our street. Four feet is not very tall. Have a lot of people going to our park, which is awesome. I'm really grateful that they're going to the park. I think the five feet gives us a little better privacy, a little bit more security. And I think, again, I think aesthetically, the five-foot height just feels much more feels just much better and feels a little more security, like a sanctuary rather than a fortress, which I believe was used in language at the last meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Uh sorry. Mr. Silva?
I'm just a real quick question for the applicant, and I, and I assume this is correct, but the, the little diagonal windows that she's proposing, the pictures that were shown represent the shape or the design of those were paint grade. And I just want to confirm that she would intend to have those be redwood to match the redwood fence as opposed to changing the color like the picture showed.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. It's all going to be redwood. And I'm also going to seal the redwood so that I can maintain the redwood coloring as long as Mother Nature will allow. Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Silva. Commissioners, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Caroline, I have one question. They're talking that you're going to be using your four-by-four posts that are there. Are you going to attach to those to bring those up higher?
Yes, I have a whole construction model. I believe in one of the drawings, I showed how I would be creating structure. From the interior side, you would see those, those, they're pressure-treated four-by-fours that have been painted. From the exterior, you would not see them. You would see a continuous line of redwood boards. The, I'm looking at the eleven-and-a-half dogwood, dog-eared boards, sorry. From the interior, the, the redwood posts would stay. They're three feet high. The crossbeams at that level would then be replaced with redwood. So you would only see a portion of the pressure-treated structures from the inside. I'm even considering cladding those with one-by to make the aesthetic look a little bit more comprehensive. All redwood. I love redwood. I've built lots of things with redwood, and I want to see more of it in my yard.
Very good. Thank you. I have one more question. They have asked us which design we like best, and I would like to know which design you like the best.
Okay, so between B and C, it's, I like both of them. The, the little windows that I'm building, they're out of a framed one-by-four, and then on the interior, they're all two-by-twos. Yeah, you know, there's one less window I gotta make for the, for the Plan, what is it, Plan C, but I'm willing to do either. I think a little bit more opening, which is Plan C, would be nice, so that we're not totally feeling like we're in a cage. But I would, there's a lot less work if I do number B, letter B. But I do, I do like the idea of the windows in the corners. I've been practicing backing out my back, my driveway and looking to see what my visual lines are. And although I don't need that line of sight, because my sidewalk is wide enough and I can just see fine without anything there. But I think the corner windows just add an aesthetic that, yeah, I think it would look awesome. And it would be functional for someone else, whoever buys our house down the line when we're ready to retire. Totally.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious, because either one's fine with me. It just came down to what, what gave you the most privacy or which one you guys liked the best?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
So you like C best, then?
Uh, wait a minute, which one's C?
I believe, I believe she said she liked B, which is the one that only has three little windows as opposed to four.
Yeah. I think Dana's right. We have long conversations about these, these drawings.
Very good. Well, I, I'd just like to know where you're at, is what you like, because to me, they're both good-looking.
I appreciate that. C would be the best, but I would go with B if that's what you guys would like.
So you like C the best, then?
I do. Thank you.
Very good. Also, when I went by your house, just to iterate on what Commissioner Silva said, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans. Your house sits lower than the cur, than the sidewalk, correct? Isn't the sidewalk up? I don't know, six, eight, 10 inches higher than the property in your yard?
I don't think so. I think it might be a little bit, but there's two, two steps up to our front door.
Okay.
And our, our property is sloped to the back. So our, the back of our property is about three feet up off the, the, the gra, the grade. So, but I think we're pretty even on the grade there. It looks a little funky because there's a flower bed in the front that has a two-by-eight pressure-treated barrier. And then it goes down to the concrete and then it goes up two steps. So we're pretty darn close to grade with the sidewalk.
Okay. Reason I stated that is normally I don't go for five-foot fences in the front, but when I went by your house, it just seemed like I was looking right in your windows.
You are.
And so therefore, that, that's one of the reasons why I'm okay with you going with the five-foot.
The other thing is, if you note, if you look, we leave our front door open a lot. We're trying not to anymore. You can look all the way through our house, all the way back to the bedroom from the side, from the street.
Right. Okay, thank you very much, Caroline. We will open it up to public comment at this time. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter may do so now?
Chair, there are no members of the public that have indicated they wish to speak at this time.
Very good. We will bring it back to commission, we will close public comment and bring it back to commissioners at this point.
I would like to note, we did receive a repeat comment from the last meeting. So the person on Luzern reiterated their support of this proposed fence height increase.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Dana. Okay, commissioners? Anybody want to make a motion on this?
Are we having discussion or no?
Yeah, we can. I, I didn't know if you had any.
I, you know what, I, I really appreciate that, that the applicant came back with, with the revision of the design. I just, I think it's, it's both better aesthetically for the community, but I think she's really gonna be happier with, with it as well. So I think the input we gave last time and sort of the cooperation between everybody to, to get to this point is great. I, I liked, I think it was B best, which has the corners and what was it, one extra set of pa, set of panels or par panels. I thought that just created a little bit more openness. I realized a little extra work for her, but that was just my opinion. I thought that was the most attractive because it included the corners for visibility and the rest. But I, otherwise, I have no objection to the design. You know, obviously, other than my comment, which was that the, the panels should be redwood as well, which she confirmed would be the case.
Very good.
I would just like to confirm for the commissioners that Plan C is the one with the most windows and Plan B is the one with the fewer windows.
Okay, I got that backwards. I apologize.
That's okay. The staff report was backwards, so you are well within your rights.
Is San C is the one that the applicant would prefer? Is that correct?
She, that's what she stated, but I believe she meant Plan B, which is the one that has fewer windows.
Okay.
She can confirm.
I think she's silenced now. You're muted.
Caroline, you now have the ability to unmute.
Sorry. Yeah, I was looking at it too. Whether I make four of these sets or I make three of these sets, it's, you know, it's a matter of a few days of construction and I'm happy to do either. So I'm, I'm more inclined to say, what do you feel would be the best aesthetically? I think the one with just the one center panel would look better, but it's up to you. It's really up to you.
Thank you, Caroline. Commissioners, anything else?
Yeah, I, I would first like to thank the applicant for the improvements that have already been done on that property. I don't know the applicant, but I've walked by that house pretty much every day for 20 years and, and the changes are, are so much for the better. It's, it's really quite amazing. As far as the choices of which of the plans to go with, I would like to go with the preference of the applicant. I think the one with, just the one in the middle, which is the one that the applicant expressed preference for. I think that would give them a little more privacy, rather than having two in the middle, it would be one. It'll still look great. And I, I'm, I'm so confident on this, based on what I've seen with the fences, not the fences, the gates, that this is gonna be a really great-looking fence either way. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Dodson. Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I, I would whatever it is, third, third that, I, I, I was really drawn to Plan B just from an aesthetic standpoint. I just felt like the two extra windows kind of pulled away from the whole, whole look. So I, I would definitely be more inclined to go with B. However, if the, if the applicant were to start putting it together and she just felt, she obviously has an eye and knows what she's doing. So if she felt that C was gonna end up looking better, because you, you never know until you build the thing. So I, I personally would not put any limitation on her in that way, either B or C for me. I, I'm just, you know, I just have a hard time with the word privacy in a front yard. I don't understand the need for five-foot in this. I think it will look more like a fortress than a sanctuary personally. I understand why it would be a sanctuary with a five-foot. I'm also concerned about pulling out, not so much that there's cars screaming by there, but there are kids going by there. I've worked at that park a few times over the years for park days, know that there's a lot of kids in and around that area. So I, I just, I'm struggling with the justification to go to five-foot, you know, just from a visibility standpoint, aesthetic standpoint, I don't understand the privacy part being a plan that, and then just pulling the car out from the garage. I'm just very concerned about that. Four-foot would be better in my mind.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Lamica?
Yeah, I like the new diagrams that the applicant brought in. It's a lot better than the first one we saw. Again, I don't have any problems with Plan B or Plan C, because I like both styles, but I'm all for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Spalata?
Yes, I do like the new plans, especially the styles B and C. I kind of lean more towards style B, just basically because it's, it does provide, it's like a compromise for the privacy, but with just enough to kind of break it up. But like my fellow commissioner said, whatever, whatever she, she's comfortable with is fine. It's very good. Very well done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, I, I concur with Commissioner Evans. I, I am one, as you know, that doesn't like the five-foot. But what I do like is the fact that she put these windows in, so she has, actually has a view into the street by looking through the slats of her, of her little windows there. I also like, to me, I like B the best because it gives you two equal 10-footers instead of six-foot in the middle and then two fours on the end. I, I kind of like that. And it also gives her a little bit more coverage as far as people just seeing right into her place. But after having walked by there and looked at her house, I have no problem with the five-foot. Because to me, it looked like when I was on the sidewalk. Because to me, it looked like when I was on the sidewalk, I was just right there. And if, if you had a little patio table right behind where the center of the six foot is on Plans, on Plan B, at least whoever's sitting down there kind of does have a little privacy for sitting. I know I have one of these lots where the ocean side is always cold, so that you never want to sit there. So where you want to sit, unfortunately, is right here in her front yard, because it'll be the warmest to have a table, and people sit out in the sun and talk, whatever. But with that, enough said, can I get a motion from the commissioner?
Yeah, I'll, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the, I don't have it open in front of me, but that we approve the
F E dash twenty-one dash zero one.
That we approve that. Giving the, the applicant the choice of doing B or C at the applicant's preference, with obviously the condition that the windows be redwood to match.
Very good. Do I have a second, commissioners?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Very good. Dominique, do you want to do a, a hand motion?
I'll do a roll call vote.
Oh, that's what I meant. I'm sorry.
Yes, no problem. Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Nay.
Commissioner Lamica?
Aye.
Commissioner Dotson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spoleta?
Aye.
And Chair Owens?
Aye.
Your motion passes.
Very good. Okay, and let me scroll down here a little bit.
Reports from commissioners.
It looks like reports from, I'm getting there. I'm almost done. Reports from commissioners. Anything, commissioners?
I just have a question. I don't know if this is a report or a question, or if this is something for staff. I know that we, we asked about this before, and I don't remember the answer. Monterey Road is gonna be closed down for about three months coming up, which is gonna impact all the people who live in Seaside Islands. And I think that the question was raised as to whether or not is it Peralta was, might be opened across from Seaside Middle School to provide another route for residents in this area to get out without having to loop all the way around General Jim Moore Boulevard?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about that. You're talking about the one that's up at the top of Military, right?
Right. At the, at the top of Military, there's a gate that goes through, and so right now, you know, the, the, the 375 or 380-something residents at Seaside, or home, home at Seaside Islands, plus all of Bayview, plus all of Sun Bay, they will not be able to go down towards Target on Monterey Road. They will either have to go on Monterey Road north, out past like the commissary, or they have to go up to General Jim Moore Boulevard and go out to Light Fighter, or go all the way to, is it?
San Pablo.
La Salle? Is it La Salle?
San Pablo.
San Pablo, in order to get down into town. And it just seems like, since there is a connection to Military for the three months that Monterey Road is gonna be closed, that they might consider opening that Peralta connection to allow some through traffic there. Because it would, it would frankly reduce the, you know, vehicle miles traveled significantly for people who just need to go to the store or get gas.
Staff, could we check on this?
I haven't heard anything, but I will follow up with the city manager and probably Nisha, the engineer, and see if they have any information on this.
And Dana, I can just tell you that both Scott and Nisha are aware of that suggestion. I talked to them three, four weeks ago, when this first came up on the state council. So they're well aware of that gate, and they're well aware of it as an option. I think at the time, they weren't prepared to open that up, because it would be, would be pretty, it'd be a lot of cars going through that little narrow spot. But they were into it, so they, they're well aware of it, and they should know right away what you're talking about. It was both Nisha and Scott that were working on it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, when we, when we opened the other two gates, several of us were for opening all gates, because it's not fair putting it on San Pablo, or Hillby, or Broadway. We could never figure out why they wouldn't open. There's just so much protest about opening that gate. But I'm with you. It, to me, it's all part of Seaside. We shouldn't have blocks in Seaside that lock us out from one part of the city to the other. Just my thought on that matter. Commissioners, anything else? Seeing none. Reports from staff.
So I do have some reports. I can confirm, I heard earlier discussions that Gloria Sterns is unfortunately resigned, and her last day will be this Friday. And I haven't gotten any updates on how that will be impacting us further down, but Beth and I will continue to run the planning department, and we will continue processing things without our planning director, and hopefully get a replacement soon. And then I have been able to do some research into the In-N-Out Burger and Costco gas. So in regards to In-N-Out, I believe I was able to find what the commission was referring to in regards of striping. So it wasn't on the property itself, but a comment that we received from the city of Monterey regarding the environmental impact report. They questioned whether or not there was adequate storage onsite for the drive-through queuing. And so the city requested a mitigation measure requiring queuing monitoring for one year. And if the queuing exceeds storage capacity, then the project needed to construct a right turn lane to accommodate the excess queuing on Del Monte. And so that year, monitoring, I believe, has already passed. It was determined it wasn't needed, and hence why there is not a, a queue lane, a third queuing for Del Monte.
Dana, I sat on that, and I don't know who wrote the minutes for it, but that's not entirely correct. What they told us at the meeting, what, as you said, the city of Monterey was worried about the amount of traffic on Del Monte pulling into In-N-Out Burger. They have actually worsened it by creating only one entrance into the In-N-Out Burger. What they had already told us at the meeting, because the, the people from In-N-Out came to the meeting, what they stated was that if one lane wasn't good enough, where they were coming in at the driveway closest to M&amp;S, they would line up two lines there with their workers outside with tablets taking orders. Once they got their orders, they went in rotation of how they came in, and they went around to the drive-through, and it worked really good. All of a sudden, they shut that down, all entrances through the furthest exit away from M&amp;S, which causes the cars, when they line up for the drive-through, the people that are in the restaurant cannot get out. You're locked in place until somebody finally adjusts over at the drive-through or whatever, and then that other person actually allows you to back up to get out. This is not a good plan. This is not what we, what we looked at when they submitted to us. As I said, what they submitted was coming in the very first driveway next to M&amp;S and creating multiple lanes, and having their guys out there with tablets taking orders, and they run it through, and they did that for the first year and a half, and it worked absolutely fine. Now they've quit that. I was just there the other day, and you could not get in if you just wanted to go inside and order, because the line was clear out on Del Monte and backed up to that first gate. That's what I was talking about.
Thank you for clarifying. I will need to do a little more research and see what I can find. I mean, I've definitely reviewed the circulation plan, which doesn't mention that double queuing. And hopefully, we'll be able to at least find the recording of the minutes, which are, are not detailed themselves in the actual written minutes. And I can listen to those, and we will follow up.
Very good. And it was the striping was at Costco, not here. The cut, the striping was the road that leads from the motorcycle shop off of La Salle, comes in the back entrance and allows people to get to the gas station. Now there's a fence up there, which wasn't in when we looked at the proposal for Costco. You were supposed to be able to drive through there, and they, they stated they would put a stripe down the road so that you knew which way traffic was coming on that skinny road there, because of that motel building that fence out so far.
Mm-hmm. So we were able to reach out to the Costco gas, and actually, that, that gate that's along the, the mall extension alleyway, that is actually not on Costco's property. That's, that's the neighbor's property, which is why it wasn't on the plans that were reviewed by us, or the plans that were final by the planning department. And we are working to get ahold of that property owner. And so I did also go back and listen to the actual meeting where that occurred. And I believe it was a miscommunication between you and the applicant, because you had asked, will that alleyway still be accessible? And the applicant responded, yes, it would be, but in the way that he responded, I believe he thought you were referring to the actual auto mall road, not to that cut-through. I can send you that specific, I, I wrote down those specific minutes. And so it might have just been a misclarification, but regardless, it's on the neighbor's property, so we're gonna have to follow up with the neighbors.
So that street is not a, a, a normal road, then?
Yes. So actually, I went and I pulled up the assessors, and so the portion of it, the mall extension that were on the other, the north side of La Salle, where it comes out to the Legion, that portion is officially on the Assessor's parcel map, an actual throughway. Once it hits on the Costco gas station side, and the, the ends, it's actually not. Their property lines go to the middle of a dotted easement, but it's not called out as a public right-of-way or as an alleyway. It is actually their property.
Yeah, because it's been a roadway, well, since that auto center went in. Back in the, I guess, seventies is when it went in. But, and how come they're not using the exit that they told us they would use onto Del Monte?
So we, we did also follow up with that, and so bear with me, I can bring up, let me share my screen now quick. Here it is. So this is laying out, can everyone see what I shared?
Not sure what it is, but okay.
So this is, this is that corner. This is the exit going out onto Del Monte.
Uh-huh.
So the, the exit onto Del Monte is meant to be used primarily for fuel truck exits of the premise. And then there is supposed to be this Ballard cable chain gate with reflectors when it's not being used by fuel trucks. But in addition, there is a 12-foot opening, as detailed right here, to the very right, which is left open and intended for customers who change their mind after leaving, if they're in queuing for the gas station.
Yeah, that was never told to us. Because when, when we looked at that, that was supposed to be a right turn on Del Monte only. Never saw this Ballard thing, to be honest with you.
Um, I'll have to go back, and I don't have the hard copy of the Costco plans in front of me, but I will, I will double-check with those.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with, I have to agree with Chair Owens. I never saw the Ballards. We saw, we saw a right turn lane that was specifically curved and angled, so that you could only turn right out onto Del Monte, that somebody couldn't make a left turn there, nor could somebody on Del Monte going northbound make a right turn in. It was set up as a right turn exit only, for the purposes you stated, which was somebody who changed their mind in the queue, decided to exit without making the full loop. And that was shown to us, the wider exit with the Ballard option was not something we ever saw.
And actually, no, you, you are right. Let me, allow me to share my screen yet one more time. Here we go, Costco site plan. So here is, did I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we saw.
Yep.
You are correct.
That's exactly what we saw, and it's not done to design. And the reason I say that is we're putting everything, especially if Costco gets super busy, you're putting everything on that one exit out of the auto center, and that was not what we ever had in mind, or we probably would have looked at this totally differently.
Well, uh, from a, just curious, out of a logistics standpoint, if someone has queued, come, followed this queuing and is here, I mean, oh, so you're saying they loop around again and go this way, rather than feeding out? Well, I will, I will
Yeah, I can't see the bottom of your screen. You've got it kind of cut off. But yeah, it, um, yeah, because what we saw was up at the top of your other corner. Come back down just a little bit. Because this is coming out of the shopping, the auto center right here.
Yes. This is the auto center down here. So you come, come in off the auto center here, go into the queuing, loop around, go through, and then exit this way. But you're saying that there should also be an exit where they have the option.
And also, I, I would like to listen to those tapes, because I was very clear about the, as you can see, at the, at the bottom corner of the top of the page right here, where the, the lines meet, the, the three dotted lines, that's where we asked, is there, or could you put stripes on the road? Because right now, when they park the cars on the one side, you could never tell. And see, that's why we looked at that. That was supposed to be left open for cars to come through, to come from multiple directions, instead of putting it all on the mall, one mall entrance, because unless you go clear to the other end of the mall, there's no entrance onto Del Monte out of that mall, other than that one right there.
And, and just to clarify from my perspective, I, I didn't expect people, after they've gone through the gas station line, to loop back around and go out that right-hand turn on Del Monte. Frankly, when cars are leaving the gas station, they're kind of metered. You know, they, they only go out so often, because they just filled their tank. You're not gonna have a big rush of cars. So if they turn right or left on, on that alleyway, it doesn't matter. My concern was mostly that, that the, that secondary exit on Del Monte, it, it, it doesn't appear to be built as designed, and, and that bollard, which is blocking it off, just seemed inconsistent with anything we had seen. And then I concur with, with Chair Owens, that we talked about the fact that most people will be coming from the mall parkway up the alleyway and turning left into, you know, into the queue. But what about the people that come from the north on the mall, and that there was supposed to be some sort of striping or designation for them to make a right-hand turn in?
No, and I hear you there, Commissioner Silva. That, that's what I was talking about too, because all of a sudden, this gate appeared, and it goes over and attaches right up against that other fence there, that, that comes out from the, from the hotel or whatever it is right there. You know how they built it at a weird angle, when it came out of that area? But it just seems, we haven't seen a rush yet on, because of COVID. And that, that's my fear, that we're gonna have a big traffic game there with only one entrance, one exit. But, but anyway, yeah, look into that. I'm getting an echo. I'm sorry.
I will continue to follow up.
Very good.
I do not have any further reports.
Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we need to do a roll call vote on that.
That's correct.
Thank you, guys. Have a, have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.